All right, the February 1st meeting of the Rockport School Committee is now in session. First order of business is to remind you that we're recording this for video and for later playback, video and audio. Approval of minutes from January 19th. We are all here. I'm just checking to see if there are any amendments we'd like to make. Okay, so do we have a motion to approve the regular minutes from January 19th?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public comment. It does not look, from where I'm sitting, like there's anyone who wishes to make a public comment tonight, so we'll move right into correspondence.
All right, good evening, everybody. Mr. Chair, we have three correspondents in your drive. The first, I think some of you received the emails, but in case you didn't, I just wanted to formally let you see the email that went out to the community, letting everybody know that Jeff Rodman will return next year for a second year as the interim middle school principal. And without reading the whole thing, the short version of this is he has just been an unbelievable addition to the community. He's student-centered. His depth of knowledge around middle-level education is second to none at this point, and he has really, really enjoyed his time in the community in getting to know the students and staff and families. So I'm very happy to say we've kind of locked Jeff up for one more year to really keep us moving forward. So thank you to Mr. Rodman, and thank you to the staff and students and families who have supported his entry this year. The second piece of correspondence, just to recognize that there's a letter from Ms. Penny Sperry that came to the attention of myself and the school committee, just advocating for school nurses, and I know you've probably all taken a look at it now, I just wanted to publicly thank Ms. Sperry for sharing her thoughts on the subject. We do take, obviously, the mental health and physical health of our students very seriously. We talked a lot about this at the three budget hearings about these position changes, and we believe wholeheartedly that we'll be taking care of our students well, moving forward. And she made some strong points about the importance of school nurses and mental health professionals in our schools, so I'd like to just thank her for that and let her know and the public know that we are confident in our decisions and that we're going to support And the third one is kind of hot off the presses. Recent report that came out that I shared with you all called "The Crisis in Children's Behavioral Health" from the Massachusetts Association of Health Plans. A pretty thick and thorough report, basically discussing the positives and negatives that are going on in the world of community health in general and the connection between schools and the community side of health. Most important is just a single-page memo from Massachus- from MAS-S, MASC, and Williams James College President Nicholas Covino, just reminding us that while we continue to talk about learning loss, we still have to emphasize the need to restore the social-emotional health of our students, recreate safe and supportive climates, and that all of the research talks about if we do that well, then students are more academically ready to move forward. So while we will continue to talk about growth and achievement in public schools, because that, you know, is at the crux of our business, it's also to make sure we're raising well-rounded and healthy young people. And so I just wanted to put that in there, because I thought it was pretty timely that it came out just as we were having a lot of these heavy conversations through our budget process.
Any questions or concerns about any of that?
I just wanted to say, as, excuse me, as a social worker who is on the outside of the school in children's mental health and knowing the crisis that's happening out there, I'm proud of the things that we are doing within the district to support kids and to support their mental health, and just to recognize that that is a primary, I mean, it's of great importance when we're talking about learning and achievement, so I was pleased to see that letter in there.
And I find it interesting that this letter does come from MAS and MASC, and reminding the schools of the key part that they play in the mental health of the students, therefore the community. And it's always something that we have to balance. We are here to educate, but that mental health is also really important. I think we've made some nice additions over the past couple of years, and I'm proud of that, too.
It seems like we're getting many more collaborative MAS and MASC updates, which is nice, because they're both on the same side of this equation. It's nice to see it. So personnel, it looks like we have two maternity leaves and one addition.
We do, so congratulations to Nicole Pizzamonte, who will be taking maternity leave from the middle of April through the end of the school year, and congratulations to Danielle Gilka, who will be taking maternity leave May 21st and will take an extended leave through the '23-'24 school year. So best of luck to both of them with their growing families, and happy to welcome Christopher Dowd, who was recently appointed to the position of high school paraprofessional. So welcome, Chris.
Lot of baby showers in our view.
Right.
All right, so Josh, that's a bad segue. You probably don't have a baby shower.
Unfortunately, no, but I do have the elementary school, which is pretty close. So from the elementary school, the 24th marks the halfway point of the year. The 4th and 5th graders went on a field trip to the Cape Anne Symphony. They listened to many selections, and my brother had a lot of opinions. Their health office is asking for clothing donations, specifically new undergarments and lightly-worn winter clothes for the winter season if kids forget stuff and things like that. The annual student art show, and this applies to the middle school and high school as well, runs from March 1st through the 12th at the Rockport Art Association right downtown. And all of the teachers in grades 2 through 4 have attended professional development on the FOSS system for science, and consultants have observed how they teach in the classroom. At the middle school, Eleanor Jones won the spelling bee and will be moving on to the regional in March. They hosted the intermediate math league, where over 80 students competed in a math competition. I'm on the high school math team. Finn Brady, the 6th grader, actually, pretty surprising, scored best from our school at 10 points. They had their first all-school dance in the past three years with over 140 attendees, and congratulations to the student council for organizing that. Sounds like a headache. And over at the high school, we just wrapped up our first semester. Report cards went out. It was pretty good. We had midterms. It was busy for a while, but that has finished up. The jazz band recently played a big band concert at the Shaolin Lou. And, let's see, anything else? Yes, the teachers did the professional development on restorative justice. That was just yesterday, and I've heard good things from different teachers about that. And semi-formal is coming up, which...
Semi-frigid, it sounds.
Semi-frigid, yeah.
Saturday.
Yeah. Yeah, and yes, and we're heading into our course selection process, but other than that, it's calmed down a lot, so.
I think the art association or art show at the art association, it's one of the highlights of the year. It is such a special sort of event, and it's just such a treat to see the range of creativity that we have in the student body, so.
Yeah, and I shout out to the community, because one of the things that they've shown helped children in choosing to go on to college and choosing what their career paths might be is trying it on. And our community allows them to try on being professional musicians at the Shaolin Lou, to try and be professional artists at the art association, and, you know, those are things that are pretty impactful. So I am seeing some of our seniors are getting into places like Berkeley, and, you know, a lot of our kids are taking that forward to their colleges, and the community deserves a lot of gratitude for that.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Josh. That was great. Do you know what the winning word was from the spelling bee?
Ooh, it started with an A. I forget exactly what it was.
Well, that narrows it down.
It was...
It was "Pawade."
What was it?
Pawade.
Oh, it didn't start with an A. It did have an A right in there, so.
Pawade, yes.
Wow.
One of Eleanor's, Olivia's friends, and "Don't," I did not, was not.
That's a, wow. How did you remember that?
It was a big deal in my house.
Okay, enough said. Subcommittee reports. Do we have any subcommittee reports?
Well, the high school council did meet last week.
Excellent.
Due to a work and brain emergency, I did not make it. But they went over a lot of the budget document. They went over that closely. Specifically, and it was the student representative, the community representative, and Amy. So that's great, because they got to talk about this in depth with two key stakeholders. They talked about the new science and engineering electives through Project Lead the Way, the extended partnerships with Salem State and North Shore Community College, and the revamp of the business courses, and the new face for the library in the, and how they will operate and everything. Feedback was mainly positive. I will corner the student representative and see what he really thought, but I think he's pretty, it's Sebastian, he's, I think if he had something to say, he always has opinions, so I'm sure, yeah.
We will be meeting next week to talk about that, but yeah.
Great, great.
Feel free to reach out about that.
Awesome.
The elementary council also met. I know, I didn't make it to the last meeting, so, and it was great. We just kind of got an update about things that are happening. Beginning of the year, we had two new administrators there, new to the building, Amy Waterman, Jody Goodhue, so they kind of wanted to just give an update about things that are actually in process and happening now. So they said they've felt a big, the school culture feels very positive. They've been, had a lot of student involvement when their community, monthly community meetings. They have a student showcase out in the front lobby. They're sort of like this glass case where they, a different grade or special will have that every month, so you can go check out their work. Talking about some of the fun and outside-the-box things that the teachers in the school are doing. They did the 80s for the 80th day of school. The second-grade team, too, had a fraction pizza party where they pretended to be chefs and did pizza for fractions. They're having a literacy review and to allot, make sure everything's aligned with the science of reading, and to just look at that whole curriculum. They are implementing landmark writing curriculum, and there's been some professional development around that. The restorative, they've already sort of implemented some restorative practices with some students, and they said that that has gone really well. And then, as Josh mentioned, the FOSS science PD for grades 2 through 4 and really getting support. So they said there's been a lot of changes, but they feel like they've been really positively, there's been, the teachers have been very receptive, and people have kind of just jumped in, and a lot of great stuff is just sort of, you know, really happening. So that's great. Stuff we've been hearing about, like the writing for many years, is kind of, it's happening, so it's really exciting. It was an exciting school council.
Nicole, do you know, like, what is their perception of, what represents the 80s in their mind? Because that's like 40 years out.
I know. They're talking about that, because the parent that was there was like, what do they know about the 80s? I said, well, like, do you remember when we were in school, you dressed up for the 50s? You know, like, the same thing. So I think it was a lot of, from what I saw on the Facebook page, it was a lot of, like, you know, bracelets or, like, big hair.
Leg warmers.
Leg warmers, yeah. Neon, neon stuff, so I know, I thought that was pretty funny. Let's go. So.
For the record, the superintendent's office won multiple call-out radio stations.
Oh, yeah, they were call-out.
They would play the 80s music.
Yes.
And we were actually shut down and not allowed to win anymore. So there were a lot of children of the 80s, I believe, working in the superintendent's office right now, so.
And I guess they're bringing that call-in show back by popular demand. A group of students wrote to them and said, "We want this call-in back," where we play the music and the teachers get to call in from their classrooms. So they're bringing it back every Thursday.
That's awesome.
So fun stuff happening at the elementary. Yeah, it's great. They're doing a great job.
Yeah, we should see what it's like, not having been in the 80s ourselves.
And that's magic education.
What?
Okay, thank you. That was great. So we have elementary, high school, probably not a middle school update.
The middle school's meeting tomorrow, actually, so next meeting we'll give an update.
Cool. Okay, so then in unfinished business, we have the mask policy review, which I imagine is revving up for...
It's moving, as I said earlier, it's moving slowly, but it's moving forward. I have to, big shout out to Ms. Oger in the back, who is basically our point person for all the documents. So there's a heavy document upload and document share going on behind the scenes right now, so they've needed all of our policies, which, as you know, are in Google Doc format, so we needed to share everything out in certain formats. That includes student handbooks, staff handbooks, all union contracts, anything where there's policy or language connected to policy. And so now there's a small team working with and for Dorothy Presser at MASC, who over the course of the next, it could be four to six weeks, I would have been told, who will do a deep dive into everything. When they're done, then they'll contact my office again, and they'll basically kind of spell out the next steps timeline. So I probably don't anticipate hearing much for about a month to a month and a half from them as they do all of this work, and then I'll come back to you with another update and say, here's where we are. They've done a thorough review. These are the next steps. And at that point, my experience at least, is at that point, they'll take each section of the new version one at a time. They'll take a look at Rockport's policies, best practice mask policies. They'll start to do recommendation development, and then we can pull together with the subcommittee with their working docs and kind of put our stamp on it, and then bring it to the full committee for approval, most likely one section at a time.
That's a heavy lift.
Yep. The hope is to open up the new school year with a brand-new updated policy book. That's the aggressive hope.
There are often policy changes in August.
Does that include the handbook?
You couldn't hear her.
I see you, but...
Your microphone.
Yes. Yeah, yeah, for August, the handbook as well, rewriting that for the new school year.
Yeah, so thank you. Yeah, that does include and rewrites of student handbooks, which will not be done. The policy part will come from MASC, but the leadership team, certain members of the leadership team will be tasked with a full overhaul of the student handbook moving forward, so that we'll also enter next year with a brand-new student handbook, too. But a lot of that lift will happen over the summer, I would suspect, so.
Mark, it would be interesting, once their work is complete, which is a ways down the road, but getting their input on, so now that you've kind of reconciled and brought up to speed all of your documentation, what does it look like in terms of maintaining that?
Right, right. So I will ask her about that, I believe, as we enter a partnership with them.
Right.
There'll be, it'll be an iterative process, so as their office is updated on a new law or a new practice that has to impact policy, all of the school districts that are consulting or contracting with them will then probably get the updated version. It comes to you and through the subcommittee for approval, but I'll make sure I clearly understand that process before we get to that point. But that's my guess, is it becomes iterative out of their office.
That's great. Right, so now we move on to, every year, every school committee is required to take a look at re-upping their school choice program. I think that the state encourages school districts to be a part of this program, so it's really a, do you have a compelling reason to opt out? Because this gives the power for students and parents to find the right fit for their particular learning style across school districts. So I think you have quite a document here with the recommendation.
So the leadership team and I met a couple weeks ago, tried to put together just a one-pager for you all to make it pretty succinct and clear. As the chair said, strangely enough, the law has a presumption that all school districts will participate, so it's kind of a reverse permission slip, so to speak. So this is our leadership team's recommendation. We took a close look at projected class size, new staffing configurations based on budget and needs of departments, and so we did our best to physically align them for you, so you can kind of do the math down the columns yourself. But that second table is basically our recommended total for a total of 102 open seats, 10 in kindergarten, 10 in first, 10 in second, five in third, no open seats in fourth based on class size and changes in staffing.
Right.
And then five in fifth, 20 in sixth, 20 in seventh, 12 in eighth, and 10 in ninth. We are recommending we do not open 10th and 11th and 12th. That becomes more and more problematic in Massachusetts, as credits are different from town to town and high school to high school. As you'll see soon, we're about to propose a physics-first-science model moving forward, so if some school districts start with different science courses than others, that child has a hard time acclimating and then creating the right schedule and the right pathway for those students. So there's a lot of academic rationale behind why we recommend to not open those seats. But with 102 seats, we believe we'll be able to meet the threshold that we presented in the budget that's necessary, and then we will do a pretty aggressive call-out locally to let people know what our timeline is as far as the application process goes.
Right. So this clearly synchronizes with what we've been talking about before and which your productions have been. It's just organized in a slightly different one-page way for us to take a look.
The, just math. The 40 in kindergarten includes the 10? Does not include the 10?
Does not. So we're at the top number is our current enrollment, and so if you look at that 40, add in the 10 in first grade, that's the projection of 50 kids in first grade.
I just wanted to double-check.
Yep.
Are these new students, or what about the kids who are already choice in Rockport at 10, 11, and 12? These are just new seats? Yeah, okay.
Okay, so, so a question about the math, too, going back to that. So if I remember right, it's about 185 current choice, right? And then there'll be some seniors who are leaving that, right?
21, 23, yes.
Yeah. So this is another 102, in addition to the 185 minus the seniors, right?
Open seats.
Right, so open meaning new.
Historical data shows us.
Right. And historically, I guess one of the things I'm wondering, historically, do school choice, current school choice usually stay within? Are they, they're automatically in. Once they're in, they're in.
By law, once you're in a district, you're in the district.
And historically, do they usually stay all the way up through 12th grade?
Yes.
Yeah.
Generally speaking, yes.
And they're already included in enrolled.
Correct.
Yes.
So any other questions or concerns?
One pager.
Yeah, it's really helpful.
Do we have the, do we know, one of the things that I used to do was the teachers in one, the number of teachers in one and two, and you may have it on the top of your head, but I do not.
In the elementary school, it's three across the board, except for the reduction in 4th grade.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yep. But I'd be happy to tweak this document moving forward if that's an easy fix, so. Yeah.
One only suggestion for tweaking that might be helpful is, because at first I was a little confused about the current enrollment, because it doesn't have the pre-K on here.
Right.
So just thinking, in my head, I'm looking at current, there's, because we have different charts, like in the budget book, I know there's a chart very similar to this, but it has the pre-K.
Yeah, so the pre-K, there's no, there's no guarantee that every child in a pre-K comes to your kindergarten, so the number in kindergarten for this is based on historical data. You can't do a clean roll. We only have 23 students in the pre-K, and we know for a fact that we're going to have potentially double that amount in kindergarten. So that's the only reason for the drop-off. It's our less meaningful number, so we use historical projections at kindergarten. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and historically, does, when you open up, because I've not really been through the process before, when you open up seats for choice, do usually you fill all of those seats, or is it, no, you don't usually?
No.
Okay. So this is the max that are opened up?
Correct.
How many actually come in?
This is the total amount we actually could take in without adding staff and without going over the school committee's projected.
Right, for the class size.
Or current guidelines for class size. As a matter of fact, right now, if, you know, again, it wouldn't happen, but if 102 students came in, we would be at the bottom or right in the middle of those recommended numbers.
Do the open seats carry? Like, you only have five kids register for kindergarten? Do the five stick with that? Like, is that for the class itself, or is that for the kindergarten year, or do you just reevaluate it next year?
Every year, we have to go through.
Reevaluate it, yeah.
Yep, yep.
Right. Other questions, concerns?
Straightforward.
Okay, so I'm going to ask, do we have a motion to approve the school choice program for the school year '23-'24 as presented by Superintendent Bronco?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Now.
So again, so I've been giving a lot of public kudos tonight to Ms. Oger, so I've got to give it to her again. So it might just be that I have old eyes. It just might be a stylistic thing, but I, you know, the calendar that we had was difficult at best for me. We'll just leave it at that. So we've spent some time looking at probably half a dozen or more different models from different districts, and this was our, you know, culmination of the best of what we saw, and then we brought it to the leadership team, who then shot Amanda multiple pieces of feedback, and this even builds in an accommodation for your colorblind superintendent, which is the black box around early release, for anybody who's wondering why that looks like that. So we believe we've captured everything. This has been sent to the union president already, and we believe it's solid and pretty easy to interpret, and we wanted to make sure that we put things like start and end times on there and early releases, things that weren't on there before, because if this really is hanging on your fridge, or you take a screenshot of it in your phone, that we hope that this is kind of one-stop shopping for us. So thank you to Ms. Oger for putting this together, and just like you to take a vote to formally approve it tonight, if possible.
I think, Ms. Osha, this is wonderful. I mean, it's got all the info you could want, how many days per month, what time they're coming back to the house. I mean, everything that you see being queried on Rockport stuff when there's a half-day is answered here at a year at a glance.
We just can't tell you how many buses are running on that day.
That's right.
Ahead of time in the calendar, that's all, so that will continue to be real-time updates.
But even the breakdown of, you know, letting us know when it's a half-day for kids, but it's a professional development day for teachers down in the box, if you're interested, that's really critical information and helpful to see all compiled in one place, so that's wonderful. So I think you're looking for a motion to approve this. Any other questions about it, or?
Does this have the snow days, you know, the end-of-year potential?
We did not build that in. Some schools put the plus-five in there, and others just put it out on the website, and then as the snow days happen, there'll be an update live on the digital calendar, and then we could have a conversation about whether this gets sent out as an updated version. My gut is that it would be the live update one.
So the only, there is Juneteenth. I don't, I think it might be outside your snow day window, but I don't know if it's worth marking it, you know, new holiday.
Right, right.
I'll know if you would hit that if the last day's...
So you will also notice, you'll also notice this as a change in practice. You will notice that there's actually no holidays referenced, like verbally...
Or names.
Named, thank you, right. That separation of church and state has become a pretty common practice in most public schools now, so you'll see that they're called no-school days. And so that's, instead of naming the holiday, we're simply saying, we don't have school on that day.
So I guess it doesn't make sense to do a no-school day after...
And Juneteenth would be the same thing, correct. Right, right.
Okay, hopefully you don't hit it.
I hope not. What's the process for the calendar, creating it, in terms of start date, professional development dates? Do teachers have a say at all?
So the, yeah, so the union contract dictates days, pre-days. It dictates whether or not you can, every town is a little different, right, whether or not you can or can't come back before Labor Day, so we have followed all of the parameters dictated or agreed upon in the teacher's contract. And then we have a minimum amount of early release days or full days for PD. I believe we're actually above it. We're still a little below the average school district in that capacity, so that would be a conversation we'd have when we move forward with negotiations around PD days. But I'm thrilled with the two days before. Not every district I've worked in has leveraged two days before coming in. I thought those were really, really important days.
Yeah.
This particular year with a new superintendent, a new leadership team, and then moving forward, now that it's not going to be about acclimation, I think there'll be really, really important days moving forward to get a lot of prep work done. What I have heard throughout my career is the more you can front-load professional development, clearly, the more impactful it is, so you'll see a lot of that stuff front-loaded and a few less of them as we trickle towards the end of the year.
Well, if you've ever been to those two days, you could, Mark, you know this, being a teacher, you see the teachers coming in kind of with the summer hangover and kind of at low ebb, and then they get really fired up during those two days. They get to see one another, they get to see what the plan is, they get to see what the focus is for the year or so. It's a really nice transition. Other questions or concerns? Doesn't look like it, so I'm going to look for a motion to approve the school year '23-'24 academic calendar as presented.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Nice. That would move us to.
Thank you.
Donations. We do have one.
We do have one, yep. So in your packet, uh, recent donation, uh, in the amount of three hundred and fifty dollars to the music department from Robert and Lillian Welcome. So a big thank you to the Welcome family. Um, I, I continue to be blown away, um, by the support and the philanthropic actions of the community. Uh, it's, it's, I, you know, I feel like the, the amount of donations, the amount of community support, the amount of volunteerism. You spoke a little earlier about the connect, you spoke earlier about the connections between, you know, Rockport Art, uh, Rockport Music, the Shaolin Lou. Um, it's really a community effort to, to raise our children and to educate our children. So every time we get donations of any size, um, they're greatly appreciated and we, we are very serious about making sure that money is used wisely, um, to move programming forward. So thank you to the Welcome family and to everybody else in the community who continues to support us.
Well, and I, I think, and Josh, you're headed down the barrel for this one, but at graduation, it really is staggering to see how many donations from local entities and the scale of them. It's just, is, you know, it's really a wonderful.
It's always a question about whether they should read all of them, because there's so many donations that they're like, are we really gonna?
That can be an endurance contest, for sure.
It can, it can.
It's a good problem to have.
Yeah. It, it's a really good problem to have, yeah.
And they deserve to have their name called out.
Of course. As well as, um, with all the people who show up to graduation, cause they donate a lot and then a lot of the community members show up, which is always very encouraging.
Yeah. Some schools do a separate awards night for.
Yes.
Colleen, you have to push your button, because we can't hear you. I wanna hear you.
Mr. Chair, we do need a motion to accept the donation.
I'm going there now.
Thank you.
Do you have a motion to approve the acceptance of the gift of three hundred and fifty dollars from Robert and Lillian Welcome?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, folks. Um, finance, do we have?
There is nothing new.
Nothing new from the last meeting.
You have the warrants and, uh, the professional development day yesterday was paid with grant funds, which we were greatly appreciative of to be able to use that. And, um, other than that, we're just chugging along after the budget.
Updates the last one.
Correct.
Excellent. Right, school committee discussion. I know we have a number of items.
Excuse me. So two things. One was, um, Amanda was gonna be kind enough to schedule, um, our new regional social worker for an upcoming meeting. Um, she hadn't gotten back to Amanda, I don't think, with a date specifically that she was available. Um, but that should be, you know, we can hear a little bit more about what she does. And in light of sort of all the discussions we've been having about supporting students and mental health, I think it'll be great to sort of see how we can have that sort of one more layer of, of support. Um, I don't think we've really had a lot of communication with our regional social worker. Um, so that will be great. Um, and the other thing was, I know we had spoken about the school committee doing, um, some sort of listening sessions, um, or discussions, you know, sort of people can come and talk to us about the budget book. Well, we can hand them out at some different places around the community. So I did speak to Ross at Brothers Brew, who's always so great about, you know, having any community event there. So he had said, you know, and we can kind of, behind the scenes, one-on-one, maybe I'll talk with people and see some dates that work for people. But we, he said, anytime that we would like to come to Brothers Brew, Brothers Brew is ready for us. Um, so we could do, you know, like a Saturday there or something and catch people there or even more than one. And I also spoke to Dana, who's the assistant director of the library, and she similarly said, let us know. Um, I know there's some times, um, a couple of morning times when there's young families here that maybe have kids that aren't even in school yet, but it might be nice to catch some of those people and talk with them. Um, and as well, we could do sort of like an evening time, um, or an afternoon. So I can catch up with people sort of one-on-one and, and talk about some dates that work. Maybe instead of trying to have a group think on, on dates.
Calendars, you could just, sure.
Right.
And this is sort of the, it sounds like it's an ask-me-anything sort of meeting, but obviously with the special opportunity with the budget and the budget book for people to.
Just kind of come, can, people can meet us. They can ask us sort of what the school committee does. Um, they can ask us about what's happening in the schools and we'll have the budget books there with kind of that special focus of if people have questions about anything that's in it or they wanna discuss it further. Um, it's just kind of being available to constituents to, um, to speak with them. So I will catch up with everybody one-on-one and see what people's availability is. But it looks like both of those places were very generous with, um, saying that we can have space anytime we like.
We just have to watch, no more than two of us there?
Yes, no more than two, otherwise they'll be a quorum. So we can battle it out for who gets to be donut-adjacent.
Sometimes I think in those, this, I think it's a great idea and I, I definitely want to participate in that. I think sometimes it's hu- can be intimidating for somebody just to come up and start talking to somebody in administration or a school committee member about the schools. So I wonder if there's, as we're thinking of doing this, if maybe we think of some ways or brainstorm some ideas about how maybe it's, we can make it easier for somebody. Um, maybe there could be kind of some guided questions almost for, for people to think about, like what, what do they like about the schools? What's working? What would you like to see changed? What, what would you like in the future? Like, maybe some really simple ways just to get that conversation going, I think would be really.
And maybe when we sort of put it out there, not gonna say advertise, that seems like the wrong word, but when we let people know about it, we could put some of those sort of questions or suggestions in, in that, you know, of things people could ask. So that's great. That's a great point, Mark.
Yeah, cause that can be hard to, and I, I imagine we'll have a little sign or something so people know who.
Sash.
Try to be witty. Kathy's good at that. Kathy's good at coming up. She'll have some witty meme on a sign for us to.
Deely boppers.
Well, also, I, I envision like, um, fish bowls and, you know, have you ever been in the elementary school? Have you ever been inside the middle school? Have you ever been inside the high school? Ha, I've never been in any of the school buildings. And just have people take a marble or a pebble or, so we get an idea. And that's just, could be an icebreaker. And people don't even have to talk to you that, they could just, but it's a way to come up to the, the stupid table while you're, where you're drinking your coffee, you know, and trying not to look at your phone.
And donuts. There can be donuts.
And I also suggest, um, maybe looking at a weekend time to do it, especially.
Yeah, Brothers Brew, we're gonna do a Saturday, I think.
Perfect.
Yeah.
And probably we should do it at the, I mean, that's really nice of Brothers Brew, but there's obviously a high watermark where people are trying to get in and get out and the tables are at a premium. So just getting a feel from them about what, what works for them as well as us, or not.
Yeah, so.
Imposing, that's really generous of them. Okay. Any other, um, walk-on items from the school committee? No, okay. So do we have a need for executive session tonight?
We do not.
All right, so I guess, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good.
Thank you.
Hey, well, this was a short one.